All right. If I could have your attention, please.
Well.
It is 4:30. We have a full agenda, so I would like to begin. Let's begin by if you're able to stand, we'll recite the bread allegiance.
Where is that?
It's over there.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, I think that's correct. All right, can we have the roll call, please?
Brad Henn.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
All right, you have before you the agenda.
We take a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Henn.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, we have time now for public comments. And it's Linda, as I understand, Linda Lux is here today representing Kelly's Catering, wants to talk to us about starting up the Dinner Date program again. Step forward to the mic and just announce your name.
Okay. My name is Linda Lux. I'm Kelly Lux's wife. We have Kelly's Catering in Hospers. And we are not going to start up Dinner Date. We are going to start a seniors meal once a week here in Sheldon. We've been successful in other towns, Paleno, Orange City, George, Susanna Hall, and Hospers. What we're seeking is to be able to use the basement facility here, I understand, has a kitchen and has tables and chairs set up and everything. And what we would do is we would provide a meal for $6 on Thursday at 11:30 for anybody 60 and older. We would come and set up a buffet line for them. We would only need the kitchen in respect of either getting water or when it comes time to clean up the room, which we would do also. We carry a vacuum cleaner with us and everything, so we do clean up the room after we're done. So we're here to see once if possibly you guys would waive the fee for renting the facility, as I understand you did for Dinner Date. And if we could have the meal in the basement here, we would take care of all the advertising of the meal. We would have, we would set up an informational meeting to begin with on a Thursday in the future, some date, and put out advertising to the community through newspaper, radio. I don't know what, who do you have for your television? Do you have premier communications? Okay. They've offered to put the information on the TV station, the local TV station too for us. So.
All right, anyone have any questions for Linda?
One more thing. We would take care of getting it health inspected again, too. I'm assuming it was okay before when they had Dinner Date here, but we would take care of that upon ourselves to get it inspected again and pay the fee for that also, which we have done for the other places that we do this.
All right.
I think it's a good deal. My mother-in-law has gone to the one in George a couple times, and I asked her about it, and she said it's very good. So I would like to see us do that.
Hope you're busy.
Hey, Craig, real quick, I got a comment. Is this gonna be every Thursday?
Every Thursday at 11:30.
At 11:30, okay. As I'm looking at this right now, I just came to my attention that we have our SCDC monthly luncheon on the third Thursday down in the basement. That would be the only conflict that we would potentially run into.
Is there another date open for you as far as?
Thursday was the day we picked, just because we only do it once, and that's in Hospers, right at the café, so it would be more for us convenient-wise to do it on Thursday, because the other days are pretty full with two different towns that we do each day. Is there another room here in the community building at all?
We could use, I mean, we could use the upstairs. I mean, we'd set the upstairs up otherwise, too. The round tables are already set up, so that's the nice part about just using the basement. The setup time is.
There is that room to across the hall, the smaller room. How many people do you anticipate serving on that?
It ranges anywhere from possibly 15 to 20, all the way up to 40-some, depending on the kind of response. I mean, George, we've had 46 people show up one. You know, it's not consistent just because of people's schedules and that. 20 to 30 people. We'll know more after the informational meeting and so forth, so.
Would that room across the hall to the west handle that many people?
Downstairs, you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. And they can move the dinner, if the Dinner Date moved into that location on those Thursdays at one month of the month, at one Thursday of the month?
That should work.
We may need to look into that a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can willing to work with her, too. I mean, if we need, the downside is we're gonna be every month for us as opposed to one week for you guys, so we have to look at alternative sites, whether that's upstairs, and we have to go through the setup process.
Because our, those meetings are averaging 40? People, 30 to 40?
Tomorrow, we have over 60 attending, so it depends month-to-month on kind of what we have for our speakers and stuff like that. So that's the only conflict that I pop up, but I do think there's a way around it. I mean, whether we have to now move upstairs, and I guess I'll follow whatever direction you guys want on that, but we'll make ourselves flexible.
So are we looking to take action on this at this time?
Yeah, it's printed on the agenda, so you can offer a motion and pass it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we can make a motion to approve it?
If it's on the, it's printed on the agenda, so you can.
I would say I'd make the motion to approve the use of the facility and coordinate something with the SCDC.
Support.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Henn.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and range, set up the informational meeting and everything. And is there somebody in particular that I should be, we should be contacting when we figure out when the meeting is gonna be and so forth? Or when we decide to do the meeting?
Be the city contact. There and GRI.
Okay. And I think we have both your emails, I believe, don't we? So, okay. All right. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, are there any other public comments at this time? Unrelated to anything perhaps you're here for that's further down on the agenda. Seeing or hearing none, I'd like to move on, move forward then to the consent agenda. You have that before you, if you had time to review it. I will for the media. The EMA applicant is Cody Hattin, H-A-T-T-I-N-G. And the SCAD applicant is Jill Cook, just like it sounds. Will we entertain a motion to approve that, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Henn.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. So far, so good. Moving on to old business. Let's begin discussion about the request for the Pavilion fireworks display. Joel here, here, do you wanna, have you any comments at this time?
Yeah. I'm whenever council's ready, yeah.
Do you have anything you'd like to say first?
I could start.
Sam speak, and then you can.
Thank you, Mayor. And Tricia, if you want to jump in here after I'm finished introducing it, there are two key questions for the council to answer. One is, do you want to allow fireworks at the Pavilion that is under our ordinance, that is the council's decision to make? And secondly, do you want to require the services of a licensed paratechnics professional or allow someone with extensive experience but without an official license to shoot off fireworks? The Pavilion Board's recommendation is to allow the fireworks, but only with the services of a licensed paratechnics professional who's licensed for display-level fireworks and who has at least $6 million in insurance, with the city being named as additional insured. Tricia, do you have anything to add to that?
Joel, would you like to speak?
Sure.
Step to the mic, state your name, please.
Joel Bowesma, and I'm here on behalf of Islet Fireworks. So I know we've been discussing this with the Pavilion Board for a long time, trying to get to an understanding as far as what's possible, what's not possible. And this last week, after the recommendation by the Board to bring it to the city for $6 million worth of insurance and paro technician's license, I did some calling, and some of the information that you probably have with you right now is I first reached out to one of our suppliers, our wholesaler in Watertown, Lou's Fireworks. They've been in business for over 50 years, and they've done hundreds, if not thousands, of paro technical shows, not only the big ones with the 1.3 stuff, which the village uses, but also the small stuff, which we sell, the 1.4. And I talked to Lucas, their manager up there, who's done a lot of the shows himself, and I asked him, I said, "Well, Lucas," I said, "How many claims have you guys had of, when you've done all these shows, how many in the past, how many claims have you had?" We haven't had any claims. They've never done a show where there's been personal injury. They've never done a show where there's been a loss of property. And I told him, I said, "Well," I said, "you know, we presented this to the Pavilion Board, you know, and we have our $2 million, you know, that the state requires for liability insurance." And I said, "What we found is that we had J&amp;M come in, and they said that they carry $10 million worth of liability insurance." And he goes, "Joel," he goes, "we've never had an issue as far as liability insurance at any of our shows, except when J&amp;M has come in first and bragged about their $10 million liability coverage." He said, "It's never been an issue." So that's one of the things that I uncovered this week. So then I also called, I emailed, I reached out to J&amp;M themselves. I thought, "Well, let's find out from them what their track record is." And I got an email response from Tel, J&amp;M, and he was bragging about how safe the fireworks are, and then eight years of blowing them off, they've never had a claim. So their track record is also spotless. Lou's is spotless. Well, then I also reached out to our insurance company, spoke to Christie there, who we've been doing business with for three years, and they currently have 600 of us under, in their portfolio. So a lot of people. And I said, "All right, Christie," I said, "I need some information. I know you probably don't have anything on paper," but I said, "Let me know, how many claims do you guys get a year?" "Oh," well, she goes, "on average, we might get one personal injury claim a year." I said, "Well, okay, well, that's personal injury. What about, you know, property loss?" I mean, because these people like me, they're doing shows. "Boy," she goes, "I can remember one property loss. Somebody shot a firework off too close to a screen, that was a display screen, and an ember hit it and burned a hole in it. Didn't start on fire, just burned a hole in it." So with them as having 600 of us and not having a property loss claim, in her recollection, their record is also spotless with fireworks and display and shows. So I guess, you know, when we look at fireworks in general, yeah, there are exceptions that, you know, you may want to prove the rule with, but those exceptions aren't coming from the professional side of things. Myself, you know, myself, J&amp;M, Lou's, any of the professional people shooting stuff off, it's coming from individuals. People miss using fireworks, not using, you know, NFPA, you know, applied distances, you know, X number of feet per inch of diameter, having water on hand, fire extinguishers. So when you look at the professional side of things, it's a different story than when you look at the individual, the public. With that, J&amp;M, too, they also, and I put my email to Sam, is that they also shoot off the big stuff, which also contains an element called aluminum flash powder, which is, it's sensitive stuff. It's definitely a lot more dangerous. And that's one thing that individual like you and I, the stuff we buy and sell at the store, does not contain it. So our items are also a lot less risky that way. You know, if they weren't safe, you know, the government, you know, they test these things up and down, left and right. There's a ton of safety built into them. And then when you apply, you know, the NFPA standards to discharge, you'll also find that, you know, that safety goes up. But I guess, you know, when I look at things in total, I mean, every day we take risks. We got in our cars to drive over here. You know, there's a track record of people every day, they die in car wrecks. But we assume that risk, and we still drive in our cars. You know, we swim in the ocean, people getting bit by sharks, killed by sharks, we still assume that risk. So we assume risk, but we mitigate it. You know, we put seat belts on, you know, we don't swim where sharks are. We do things to mitigate risk. And, you know, what we do in the fireworks industry is we follow NFPA rules and standards, you know, whether it's wind speed, dry conditions, anything that might put, you know, the public or, you know, private property at risk, you know, we're gonna mitigate that by, you know, applying rules and standards. So I guess, you know, when you look at that, you know, you see things in everyday life where there's risk, and there's a track record of accidents, you know, death in car wrecks, whatever else. But I've given you, you know, three examples where the record that we have as an industry is spotless. You know, not one occurrence of loss of property with either 600 of me with my insurance company, Lou's, who's been in business for 50 years, and not one evidence of loss. J&amp;M has not had one evidence of loss. So you have to look at that and say, "You know what? Discharging these things really is pretty safe."
Question? In reference to the amount of insurance that's required, did they, your source, when you talk to them, what did they consider a normal amount of insurance? What do they carry?
Well, for us, even what we do, I mean, we still do the shows, and they know that. We pay an extra premium for it, but $2 million is adequate. They don't require and say, "Well, you're gonna do a show at a place that's worth $50 million." Our $2 million coverage is still adequate, so they're.
Does your, you have a license to sell the fireworks, does that allow you to do demonstrations or not?
Yeah, as long as it is with the stuff that we sell.
Right.
Yeah. So if you want to go, the only reason you need a license is if you're gonna work with the stuff that the village does, because it's that much more volatile, and it's that much more dangerous, and it has that much more bang. So, I mean, if you looked at it that way, to bring about and say, "J&amp;M, you guys can come over to the Pavilion and, I mean, do 1.3 stuff like the village does," that's a lot more volatile element than what my stuff is. So actually, you're decreasing the amount of risk by doing my stuff versus their stuff. And that's why they have to have higher limits, because their stuff is more dangerous. So I'd say actually the Pavilion exposes themselves to more risk, more danger, by having bigger fireworks there. I think that would be common sense.
So Joel, to talk a little bit more about the licensing aspect of things. So you just distinguish, divide between size and power, I would guess, of the firework. What is, is there a licensing avenue for you to pursue for that level of fireworks? Or do you already have that? And could produce some kind of certificate of licensing?
If I wanted to do, the only licensing that's available would be strictly for like, doing the show like the village does. So, I mean, you could do that, but the only.
But that would be a different firework than what you were.
Yeah, yeah, there's no.
But for your level of firework.
No, there's no licensing avenue, there's no, nothing that I can get that says, I mean, that's why you can come in off the street and blow off the same thing I can, because if it was the case that I had to have a license to blow it off, well, everybody that bought it from me would have to have a license to blow it off. So there's no, there's nothing beyond, you know, to say, "All right, I'm certified." The only.
But if there is a licensing structure, then?
The only licensing structure is for the stuff that the village does.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then that's why they do it, is because that's bigger, it's more dangerous, and you gotta know what you're doing on that stuff.
And then to speak to the liability, I know that the Board looked at the level of liability. We didn't go as far as, but J&amp;L went with 10 million, we went with 6 million because of, that's what our investment is on the property out there, and we're trying to mitigate the risk of a total loss out there. So are you yet liability insurance for just the shoots that you do out there?
Well, if you wanted $6 million, it'd cost me $10,000. It would be, I mean, I could do it, but it'd be economically unfeasible.
Okay.
I mean, it's, and I guess that's why they, my insurance company doesn't require any higher, you know, insurance or liability limits, because they've looked at the actuarial tables, and there's a history on it, and the losses.
So you're saying it would cost you $10,000 to get $6 million worth of liability coverage for?
Yeah. Right now, our, right now, our insurance premiums are a little over $4,000. So it costs an additional $10,000.
Annual.
Annual. Yeah, for.
You can't do just a one evening?
No, I asked her, and then, yeah, no, you can't. I asked her that, I said, "Is there any way I could just do one show?" She goes, "We could maybe," and she's like, "No." She goes, "You really can't," because it's, I said, "Well, we will hope to do more than just one, but it'd be economically unfeasible." But, you know, they've run the numbers, you know, if they felt that there was a history of loss.
Right.
You know, the actuaries would come back and say, "Hey, you know what? If these guys are gonna do shows, they're gonna carry 5 million, 10 million, 15 million."
Right.
I actually had read an article, and, I mean, of all the, of all the actual property losses in a study that was done, the average loss was $1,500 of the, across the United States, and that includes everything. But I guess my best evidence that I have for you guys is professionally, there's nobody that's had a loss between J&amp;M, my insurance company.
No, I appreciate that information, because it certainly is a positive, you know, position. But when you take out insurance, you insure for the worst case and not the, not the track record.
Yeah.
I mean, when you insure your house, it's for the whole house, not for $5,000, assuming that that's all the damage you're gonna get. So I think the risk management by, you know, that the Pavilion Board has provided us to review is based upon full replacement of the Pavilion. So, and there is, there are entities out there that carry a larger insurance waiver than what you do as far as the $10 million that you mentioned that J&amp;L has. Why would they carry that? Why aren't they carrying $2 million?
I'm guessing because they shoot 1.3. They shoot the big stuff. And so they do, they do shows like the village, where there's potentially the loss of life. I mean, those things, I mean, those things will blow a hole in the ground eight foot across.
Right.
You know, that's why they have to carry $10 million. They don't carry it because they're doing $1,000 shows at the Pavilion. If that was the case, they'd carry the same level of insurance that I do, and not spend the extra money, because the insurance company doesn't demand it, just because there's no history of loss there. And granted, you know what, the, I know, there's always the what-if, you know, but, you know, there's also, there's the what-if of getting in your car, there's the what-if of everything, but when you have, the what-if is infinitely small, you know, then we gotta say, "Well, can we accept that?" I mean, you've got a building over there that has a steel roof, you've got a fire department that is more than capable to the task if there would be some sort of a grass fire out there, because the structure's not gonna start to burn all the way to the ground somehow before the fire team got there. So, I mean, there'd have to be a lot of things happen for that what-if to get to the point where that thing burned to the ground.
Right.
You know.
Turned up to the rest of the council for questions as well, but.
I guess I have a question. Are you, are you wanting to start lighting fireworks off? Your lay business is the fireworks.
We can be both. You know, we, we do it, our.
So if you're gonna be in the display, then you'd have, I would think you'd have to be a licensed.
Labor first to 1.3, if you're gonna use the technical word, display fireworks. Now, you can have a display of fireworks. You don't, I don't need a license, you don't need a license. You could go into the business, anybody sitting here can go in and do what I'm trying to do, and they can do firework shows with 1.4. Anybody can do it. So you don't need a license unless you wanna do stuff for the village and for cities and big stuff, 1.3 stuff. So anybody can do it, and you don't need a license, and all you need is $2 million of liability insurance. We see, the city of Sibley has asked us to do some fireworks for them. They blow some off at their football games. I seen this past fall, in October, the city of Orange City was blowing some stuff off that looked like our site stuff festival, right in town, by the Northwestern Field. So it's, so it's, it truly is a safe endeavor if you apply common sense and NFPA rules. And I think we got a track record, you know, in the industry that shows it. So that's, that's all I got. I'd like a chance to try it, you know, it's, you know, we'll take care of cleaning it up, we'll take care of making the calls, if it's too windy, if we think it's too whatever. Obviously, right now, it's definitely not too dry, but we'll take care of any of that stuff. I mean, we'll have two opossums on hand, we have fire suppression equipment, we'll have water, we'll have fire extinguishers, we'll have, you know, 10 pounds, you know, two and a half gallon fire extinguishers, whatever it takes. You know, and we'll stay there for, you know, a half hour after it's done, just make sure nothing's, nothing's hot. So we don't wanna see anything happen anymore than anybody else does. That's not good for anybody.
I guess I have one question, and it's probably more for Brad than for you in terms of the village's display. I was always under the impression it was the firemen that were doing all of this, setting off the fireworks.
Yes, we do.
Is there somebody from J&amp;L that are also supervising?
No. No, we've, most of it have taken the eight-hour class to light the fireworks off. You know, we've had training from them, we have ongoing training, every three years you have to have that. Whoever the lead shooter is, has to have that training. And, yeah. But we work with J&amp;M beforehand, anything I believe over six inches electronically set off. So the only thing we're doing manual is, I believe, fours and fives. The banks are all electronically discharged.
So it's not the personnel so much as the company providing the training and the insurance is what you're getting with those 1.3 you're calling?
Yeah, the 1.3 is the big stuff. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess the Pavilion, you know, now, I mean, they serve alcohol every week there, I mean, hundreds of people drinking. I mean, I think there's probably more liability and risk of somebody walking out of there at .09, even though you can't tell they're intoxicated, going down the road and get in an accident, you know, than a firework causing an injury or any type of damage. So, I mean, you assume that risk in order to serve alcohol out there, and that's, I'd say, a weightier risk than a five-minute firework show.
Greg, I think Trish May had a comment. Have I seen you raise your hand? I don't know if Greg's seen you or not.
I cannot, I can't see her at all. Are you done with what you have to say, Joel?
Unless there's any other questions, I'm finished. Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
All right, while being, you guys, your hand raised, let's start with you. Come to the mic, state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Tricia Maydrin. I am the general manager of the Crossroads Pavilion. This is awkward. You know, we've been talking about this since, seems like the dinosaur age, but the reason being is there is a risk to it. We have calls about concerns about neighboring properties, people in our community that might have PTSD, traffic concerns with Highway 60, what about airflow with the FAA. So what we've done, Sam and I, and then you all, and then you posed the task to the Crossroads Pavilion Board to vet a lot of these questions and find out as much information as possible. And Pete and Tom have been included in a lot of that, and some of the board members wanted to be here, they couldn't, so I thought I would come up and speak also on their behalf. Bottom line, what their decision came down to was, we need to cover our cost, and we need to cover our responsibility. So responsibility is going through all these questions and processes, talking with Islet Local, and then going also to a recommended person who did fireworks for a local family's daughter's wedding some five, six years ago. local family's daughter's wedding some five, six years ago. So the benefits we talked about, the ooh and ah, it's a family affair. Everybody loves fireworks. What, excuse me, most people love fireworks, right? Um, it could be an added feature for us at the Pavilion. Um, and the more we talked about it, then we figured out the risks. What are the risks gonna be? Um, yeah, insurance, we wanna make sure that we cover our property. Uh, 5.7 million, give or take, is what we've spent on that, so that's where they came to the grounds of the $6 million. Pete and Tom, if you agree. Um, and then having the person be a certified technician helps us to then say at the Pavilion, "Bride Susie Smith, you want fireworks? We want you to use this kind of person so that we are eliminated from the equation other than running a successful event with the people indoors and outdoors. That is a whole nother business." And I personally do, do not know the ins and outs and I'm not comfortable making that decision. So the board pondered all these thoughts, questions, concerns, and that's how they came to this, um, recommendation to you. And it was with heavy heart, there was, it's, there's many neighbors very concerned. So we also had Tal Allen come out from J and M displays, and, uh, he shared information with us as well that evening, and then after that is when they made the recommendation. So I just thought, on the board's behalf, we took everything into consideration that the public said, you had said, the risks of the, the surrounding properties, and what would be the best to cover our liabilities financially and our responsibilities to our city property, to the neighboring properties, to the traffic, et cetera. So I just wanted to share with you where the board came from. And Tal Allen is here if you wanted to pose any questions as well, and I probably should have introduced that right away, but...
Okay.
Okay, any questions on the board's behalf that I might be able to answer? Pete, you can do that, or Tom? Thank you.
Okay. I understand you're Tal. Is there something you'd like to say?
Yeah, just...
State your name, please.
It's Tal Allen with J and M Displays. I'm a sales representative and lead shooter for the, yeah, a couple of things I wanna clear up that Joel was saying, there is no license for 1.3 or a consumer in the state of Iowa. So anybody can shoot fireworks in the state of Iowa, you don't have to be licensed. We, as a company, require all our shooters and employees to be certified, APA certified, which is American Pyrotechnics Association certification. That's the same certification that we do with the fire department for shooting the Village West show. So the state of Iowa doesn't have no licensing at all. So you can't go and say, "We wanna get a licensed, uh, fireworks shooter to shoot here" because there is, it's not required in the state of Iowa. Um, as far as the insurance goes, we carry $10 million insurance, whether it's a $2,000 show or $100,000 show, because that's what our company has, the policies. And I, and as far as Village West goes, we don't provide them insurance, they provide their own insurance, and I'm sure they're not paying $10,000 for insurance. I think they've probably got a rider through the city. And I know other, um, people shoot, consume a grade stuff professionally, they get insurance show by show, and they don't pay $10,000. So you can get your insurance individually per show, and I'm not sure the exact price because we don't do that, but I know other people that do that do get it at a less price.
Okay. Any other, and that's all you got?
And as far as us having aluminum in our fireworks, the nitrate, we don't have that in ours. Yeah, we're chemically referred to, it's not in our fireworks. And what we're, what I'd be looking at out there is, I talked to mine, I don't know if people have seen the Clay County Fair Show or Sibley Baseball Show, it'd be shows similar to that size, being a biggest shell, we'd probably use is three-inch shell, two-and-a-half inch shell, and then multi-shot cakes is what we'd be using out there if we're gonna do something. And that all depends on what they want to set for requirements as a maximum that you could use as well. But we wouldn't be using any consumer cakes.
Okay. So a licensed pyrotechnic can shoot off any grade of fireworks from consumer to...
There is no license in the state of Iowa to shoot fireworks.
There is a certification.
Certification.
There's a certification, but it's not required in the state of Iowa. We do it as a company to train everybody, so everybody's been trained. And we train, we have probably, well, I personally deal with 10, 12 fire departments around the state that shoot fireworks that we supply, and they all get trained through us, through the APA. It's free training, it's open to anybody to come and have the training. And we, we do it every year. In this, around here, we just did in Cherokee, then we go on Council Bluffs, so we do free training, it's not just for our employees or people that buy from us, it's open to anybody to come and have the training.
I'm glad you clarified the licensing aspect of things.
Sure.
Because I, I think we were thinking something different.
Every other state around us requires a license. But if you go right to Des Moines, you have to be PGI certified, which is the next kinda level up above the APA certification.
We're just worried about, I'll...
Sure, yep, I just wanted to clear that up because you, you don't have to have a license particularly.
Okay. Any other questions for Tal? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So as Sam stated in the beginning, there's the two questions we have to answer. Do we want to have fireworks allowed? Was the first one. And what was the second one again?
Do you want to require a certified?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, Brad, maybe you could address this. Do most fire companies around the state have certified people on their staff? Is that fairly common or...
I think if you're shooting fireworks off, you probably do, but...
Okay, so there is a certification that's available even if it's not required?
Is it a certification or is it just training?
It's a training class, it's an eight-hour training class. And you get a certificate at the end.
You get a certificate, so you're certified.
Correct, it's a certification.
Is, Joel, is that the same thing that you went, that you have, a certification?
There's no certification necessary. Now, the fire departments, I don't know, does everyone have to have a certification? Or is it just someone? We were dealing with, and they seem like fire departments have a certification or no certification process. So...
We require as a company that any fire department itself, they have to have at least one person certified.
Yeah.
So if somebody else tells to them, do they...
I don't know.
...need that certification?
I, I guess the thing that, that, the reason we're struggling with this so much, very honestly, to me, I'll do, I can only speak for myself. I don't want to discourage you as a business, okay? I, I wanna encourage that. On the other hand, I don't want Cousin Fred and his four buddies out there shooting fireworks off.
I think that's what's gonna happen.
And somehow, somehow, we're trying to make sense out of this, and it, and it's been a struggle. Um, the problem becomes if we say, "Well, Joel is a businessman, he's in the business of doing fireworks, he's gonna be responsible," but once we give him permission, are we opening the floodgate to Cousin Eddie and his four buddies? And I, I, that scares me.
Joel, you've mentioned a couple of communities you've worked with. Have you done any of the displays that you're talking about?
No, we've had some communities that purchase our products from them, they've done their own displays.
Okay, okay.
So if they have asked us to do a display, we're, 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 no, we, they have to do it.
And you are going to do that? You're considering that or...
Well, they've asked us to, we just gotta finalize whether or not they're gonna go through with it, but they asked if we would do that.
And your answer was you would?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And what kind of a process is it to get certified?
Uh, to shoot certified, I think you gotta 10 shoots, you gotta take some time, you gotta, you don't have to be a lead shooter for to, I, I've been told that you have to be a part of a shooting.
For your case, you don't need to be...
Just, you have to take the eight-hour class to get certification. You'll PGI certification.
Joel, I'm gonna interrupt you if you can, could you come up to the microphone? We're...
Uh, for the APA certification, you don't need any previous shooting experience. It's an eight-hour course and you get a certification. For PGI, which is the, uh, Pyrotechnics Guild International, it's the next level up, that one you get certified, you take a test, um, and to keep your certification, you have to do a minimum of five shoots a year. And so that one's a little bit different.
Okay, and which of those certi, certifications does the fire department, did the fire department people have?
The APA, it's American Pyrotechnics Association, that's the one we, they just went down, Brad, a couple others just were down in Cherokee taking the cars, renewing their, because their three years were up.
Okay.
I guess I'll just add to, uh, from the perspective of myself, I, I certainly don't think that we should get in the middle, or get in the middle of free enterprise or the opportunity to, to run a business. That's not our intent. But I do believe that we have to make sure that we have someone who's competent and that they have enough insurance to cover our risk, which is the building. And I think that we owe the cus, you know, the community, uh, that kinda coverage in, whoever shoots fireworks out. Um, so I have a hard time reneeding back on that because in your case, Joel, you want, you know what you're doing, but in the situation that Pete brought up, they don't know what they're doing, and our risk stays the same. So, uh, I think, um, I think we're, we are open to, to having the fireworks out there. We think there's opportunity there for not only Pavilion, but, but just, uh, for an opportunity for, uh, new events and stuff of that nature. Bottom line in regards to the competency side and, and the coverage and liability. And, uh, but it's because of those reasons, not because I have a bias over one business to another, so...
Yes, please.
I, I just wanna make it clear, I'm not here to say I wanna do him and not him do him. I just here to clarify questions for us as far as what we provide.
I, I'm saying that, but I'm, I'm, we don't wanna get in the middle of being the ones who's liable for this. We want to be able to provide people who want to do this options that cover our minimum requirements of competency and liability, so... That's what I had on it.
I, I think we just say no, period, we're done with it, no fireworks. We have, you have neighbors out there that have complained, that have talked, you're either gonna have to have licensed people do it because you don't want weekend warriors out there doing it. Fire department has come out and said, "We don't wanna babysit every weekend," that. So you have one wedding that wants it, and the wind is 20 mile an hour, the next wedding's, it's 23, well, just let us do it. No, you can't do it. So I think that's just eliminate it, not have it, be done with it.
I think the competency part is where I believe is where that decision gets made because they're the one carrying the liability on it.
All right, further comments? We have a recommendation from the Pavilion Board who want to take action on that recommendation.
I make the motion we deny fireworks at the Pavilion.
All right, is there support for that? Denies for lack of support.
I guess I, I'd make motion that we accept, uh, the motion board with one, uh, modification, that we drop the word "licensed" and have that as APA certified.
I could support that.
All right, we have a motion, we have support.
Dollar amount of liability we want him to cover? I think you should have that in your motion.
Six million. It's listed in there, six million.
Yeah. Okay, as long as that's part of his motion.
Yeah, there, the only thing he's changing is the license.
I could, I could read it the way I wanna modify it if that helps, so...
Yeah, because it should be the way he makes the motion, not what's on the paper.
Yeah, uh, that we, that, uh, make motion that we, uh, approve the city, uh, approve that fireworks be allowed to be shot off at the Crossroads Pavilion by a certified APA display level pyrotechnics professional with at least $6 million in insurance, with the city being named as additional insured.
Pete, you supported that?
Yes.
Do you approve of that as...
I might.
Yes.
So my understanding of the motion is this grants, and maybe Micah can help me with this, this grants the ability to do the, the three dates. If there's additional dates come up, unless the ordinance is amended to delegate the authority to the Pavilion Board, the council needs to approve, um, future events listed on the, um, agenda.
I think the three would have to be part of the motion, wouldn't they?
Right.
Be listed in the motion?
Right.
So that would get amended for three events?
You can, you can say it's the understanding of the motion maker that, since you're the motion maker, that it's the, those three dates of June 7th, June 29th, July 20th.
June 7th, June 29th, and July 20th.
Right, okay.
So this motion would, would, would apply only to those dates at this time?
For these three, my, yeah, on my, as the city attorney, so, Micah, am I interpreting this properly? The way I'm reading the ordinance is the council needs to approve each event, or could it be that the council can delegate the authority to the Pavilion Board?
Well, our, our city code contemplates that upon application, right?
You gotta be close to the mic when you're talking.
The city code contemplates that there's an application process to grant it permit for the display of fireworks.
Which the minutes and the discussion at the board would qualify for that.
I mean, it's, meets the minimal requirements of our code, you can approve that. But what you're not approving is just anybody having the insurance and meeting the qualifications can shoot at any time. There's still a per-event approval process, is my understanding.
Right.
And our motion, as I'm understanding, is approving it for those three dates as we have listed, June 7th, June 29th, and July 20th.
Yeah, with that, with that new information, I support that.
And that's all we're approving this time, nothing further?
Right.
Nothing before?
Correct.
Okay. So I hand back there, my, Caleb, you had a comment, please step to the mic and state your name.
My name is Caleb Scroose, of some relation to Micah Scroose. I am a bartender at the Crossroads Pavilion Event Center, have been since August of 2017. I've worked probably a couple dozen weddings since then, and I've worked alongside Pete and others there, and there are multiple just things that can happen any night to set off something that could go wrong. I mean, there's been doors unlocked, that people have gotten to places they're not supposed to be, and that's on the side of the employees there. I mean, things get broken every night, and just to add something else that could cause strife or could cause incident isn't something that I, as an employee, love, especially as I think, Pete, was your comment with Uncle Fred or whatever with the alcohol and him setting stuff off, right? That's not something that I, as an employee, want to deal with, that's just another added risk on my part. I'm partially covered on liability of alcohol ingestion due to a, but to have to deal with fireworks, to have to deal with whatever else have, we have going on tonight as part of our job, is just another added thing. And if these three dates were to be approved, that would set a precedent for the other ones, and just to approve these three, it seems like it's taking a bit of deliberation and quite a lot of misunderstandings and difficulties to approve, so it would really be easier from our side if there was just an outright no on this is not going to be easy for us, this is not gonna be easy for the council, as, and then for, of course, my side as the employee there.
Okay, thank you. Question?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Hello?
I have one comment. I'm Lori Anderson, and I'm sorry, I haven't read the entire thing, but that is the proposal, and Sam so graciously talked to me prior about the fact that I have horses out there. And I don't know how big a fireworks y'all were thinking about doing, but I would have a concern. Um, we've had regular Fourth of July fireworks happen in backyards of, and I don't really have running horses, but I would just hope that you, if you do approve this, that it is kind of on a trial basis and I can let you know how it affects, um, my domesticated animals in my pasture. my pasture.
This is a trial basis because it's three events.
Yes, I agree. All right. I'm going to call for the question. You need to hear the motion again, or y'all understand where we're at with it? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
No.
Brewster.
No.
Motion fails.
Motion dies.
No action to be taken. All right. All right, moving on. As far as an update on the HC Lane bidding, I'm going to turn that over to you, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. The update is, is that there isn't much of one. So we have been told by Mr. Funker, he's unable, he informed me this afternoon, he's unable to attend this meeting. He did provide a message that I printed for all of you and for the media, and it starts with the pink sticky note in your packet here. And it's three paragraphs, so I won't read it all, but basically, he states that the equipment has been ordered, the supplies have been ordered through L and K, and Larry might have a date as to when the work will be done.
Well, the beams are here, and they hope to start in 10 days, two weeks, is what I read in there. Larry's on a couple of the projects they're finishing up.
To start in 10 days.
Yeah, 10 days to two weeks. So not an exact date, but a timeframe. And also, I think they read in there were no leaks with the recent rain. This is another update that we got in that email. Any other comments on that? Anything you'd like to add?
And just based on the information, I think we have this on the next agenda for an update.
Yep. I agree. Let's move forward. Moving on to new business, and the first discussion is on the Crossroads North Business Park Phase 1. And we need to, it's a public hearing on that first of all. I was officiating on the Crossroads North Business Park Phase 1. Any comments? Close the meeting, close the hearing?
Make the motion to close.
Second. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. So we go on to review and approval. Anything you want to add on that, Sam?
No, sir.
Okay.
Make motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. And then we need to set the date and the time for the public hearing on the bids for the Crossroads North Business Park.
Yes, and the bid opening would be Tuesday, June 4 at 11:00 a.m.
Okay.
Clerk's office. And the hearing would be on the bids would be at the council meeting on June 5.
So that would be our next council meeting.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. And then we also have an earthquake agreement for the Crossroads Park, which I assume you want approval. Okay. That is on page six of your council packet. The earthquake agreement has been signed by the co-op already and is awaiting our approval. The earthquake agreement allows to save significant dollars in time by taking dirt from the co-op's newly acquired property rather than hauling it in. Someone to make a motion to?
Make the motion to approve that agreement. Support.
Roll call.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
And then we need to review and approval of the amendment.
What was the major adjustment, Ange?
So the revenue is because of land sales in Crossroads North and the Rice Fest ground, 16th Street reimbursement from the DOT, and then there's the transfer in as a result of us paying down the 2013 Crossing and Streetscape debt early. That's a $2.265 million payoff. Expenses are due to hiring the consultants for the city manager search, special election, library renovation, the airport grant was a different grant in this year, so we lowered that significantly. The debt payments on those two that we're paying off early, and transferring money from the wastewater treatment to the sewer sinking, which is a reserve that we're required to keep as long as we have the loan.
Thank you. I make the motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
Roll call.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. Item 5C, Fire Department Fees. I trust you've had a chance to review those fees, two types of fees, preparedness and response.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank Brad Hind, Fenea, City Manager in Sioux Center, and Tom Van Manen, City Administrator in Rock Valley, and also the State Association of Fire Chiefs, Dwayne Hendrickson, who's the Secretary Treasurer of the Iowa Fire Chiefs Association, was of assistance as well. The resolution in front of you for the response fees is almost identical to Sioux Center and Rock Valley's. And we asked for your support on that. It brings, first time that these have been updated since 1999.
99.
So.
Okay. Any comments you have, Brad?
Nope.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
So then the second part of that is a review of the township funding rates.
There are four, I believe, townships that we serve.
Yes.
And?
Various in rates of what each one pays, 20 years old, and times they need to be updating.
So you have the recommendations there?
And I think this will, you know, Sam will get involved, and we'll have the other fire officers and trustees working on this together over the next several months. So it's a lengthy process. I remember doing it 20 years ago.
Are there agreements with the townships in play right now?
There are, if I might. There are four agreements. Tom, I've included one in your packet as a sample, but they're all the same, so I didn't include all four. We do have a sample from the State Fire Chiefs Association on a recommended template for the future. And so what we're seeking tonight is a motion from you to authorize the negotiation without sending any official notices, simply to start the lengthy and important process of working through.
So it basically would be that we would come up with what we suggest, and then go to each township and reach an agreement on that? Is that essentially the process? Technically, if Hamel Township didn't like it, they could contact the New York City Fire Department and see if they cover it? Is that essentially how it works?
Correct. They could contact the neighboring department.
Yeah.
And see if they wanted to.
So essentially, we negotiate with the townships and, okay, yeah, that... So in good faith, I think that shouldn't be a huge process, I wouldn't think. I mean, it'll take a lot of time.
So are you making that a motion to negotiate the negotiation process? Did we authorize?
Are we at a place where we're ready for a motion?
What they're looking for is a motion to authorize that negotiation process to begin.
I would move that.
And that will be you and?
Me and probably Brad.
Okay. And whoever you so choose.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'd utilize the negotiation, correct?
Well, the rates are a little bit more complicated because some of the townships have multiple service areas involved.
Okay.
And Carroll Township, for example, has a diagonal line that runs right through it. So it's not as, you know, what other?
So we don't have a determined rate that we're going to come in on, and we're going to do it through negotiation?
No, other than, you know, what is, one of the discussion points will be is what is levied and what percentage of what is levied for fire protection goes to the department that's providing the protection. And that's going to be a key point. And, you know, in a sense, the discussion's already started because last fall, Brad and I had a good visit with Kathy Lanheiss of one of the townships, and then Denny Brower with one of the other townships. And of course, Denny's since passed away, but we did have good conversations. And, you know, and what we're doing here, though, is we are going down the road of ultimately wanting new agreements to update 20-year-old agreements.
Just a second before we begin. Any more discussion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion at this point?
Yeah, so the agreement would be broader than just rates, then. What's the line item on our agenda today is rates. So is it really an agreement negotiation, or is it just a rate negotiation?
Rate and agreement.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the first reading of the ordinance setting water rates and amending lake fee notification process. Ange brought this up a couple of months ago. We have the proposal, proposed increase for fiscal year 1924 percent, no increase based on, no increase last year. I think it looks like it's pretty close to an average rate of increase, varies a little year by year, but... And then also, we talked about that notification process when changes a stream like that a little bit.
I do recommend the second reading at least, so I...
So that would be?
I would recommend approving first reading tonight and having second reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
I would make the motion to approve, to move it to the second reading.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, the motion should specifically state the first reading is approved.
Okay. Let's do that at first.
Approve the first reading.
Okay.
And move it to the second. Oh, we need two different motions.
We can do it in one, I think.
No, one motion.
I make the motion, approve the first reading and move it to the second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right. Next item is authorization request for seeking proposals for banking services. Sam, you want anything?
Yes, sir. The proposal that's in front of you is slightly different than what is in your packets. Micah had provided some additional excellent advice that was incorporated into the proposal, cleaned up some of the language. Fundamentally, it is the same. And as I've mentioned in my packet, there's several factors that have combined to make it a very good time to do this. Mike and I have also discussed this, that, you know, under the city's policy, the 1992 investment policy, and the annual depositor resolution, a resolution is necessary to be approved ultimately when the deposits are changed. So therefore, we wanted to get your support before we put out the request for proposal. This is the first time that the city of Sheldon has done this. We do do frequent RFPs for CDs, and this is the first time we've done it for the banking services itself.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
I guess I look under originality and innovation. I think we could get rather confused, us as councilmen down the road, because it says about a higher upfront rate for the first few years, followed by a rate tied to an index. To me, it sounds like that's kind of open-ended. I think we should have a flat rate for the five years.
I heard too in reading through this that it may be difficult to pick whose proposal is the best with that open-endedness there.
And then I think maybe we should just tie it to either the T-bell or the iPad, one or the other, instead of, they can have the choice of either or.
If I might, I guess the other side of that coin would be, we're not familiar enough with it to predict what kind of creative innovation someone might come forward with.
Yeah, so someone could have a really good offer to the first few years, and then followed by really high at the last three years, and if they mix it in there, we necessarily don't know.
Well, we'll know when we read the proposal.
We'll know what they're proposing, but I don't know that in terms of what's going to be the best deal, because if it's tied to a rate, we can't.
You and Warren Buffett.
Exactly. It's tied to a rate, we can't, and they won't be able to know for sure either. So maybe it will come out in the wash, I don't know. But it is a little open-ended at this point, I think, too.
So in effect, are you guys, are you ears in?
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing, Brad? To do an RFP every five years, then?
Yeah.
Have a close-in contract for five years?
If I might.
And then open it up?
The idea would not be to offer a contract, because it is, and my contact with other local governments indicates that there isn't typically contracts offered, and that allows maximum flexibility.
Do you remember the standard under the RFP for what the city manager has put together by consulting various other sources that do this around the state and other local governments, is what's in the best interest of the city? And so it's a little bit different than a public improvement bidding process that we have more familiarity with. And so if and when there are responses to this, there'll be multiple factors that come into play, but I think there'll be adequate information to make a decision per the terms of the request for proposal. If clarification is needed, the city can request that to get a better idea of if and who the deposit account or accounts would be awarded to. So it's intentionally flexible.
And if I might add to that?
Yes, sir.
Brad, I think you raised an important point. And one of the examples across the state that I found, or multiple examples of this, is where a local government was offered the...
by consulting various other sources that do this around the state and other local governments, is what's in the best interest of the city? And so it's a little bit different than a public improvement bidding process that we have more familiarity with. And so if and when there are responses to this, there'll be multiple factors that come into play, but I, I think there'll be adequate information to make a decision. And per the terms of the request for proposal, if clarification is needed, the city can request that, um, to get a better idea of if and who, um, the deposit account or accounts would be awarded to. So it's intentionally flexible.
And if I, if I might add to that?
Yes, sir.
Brad, I think you raised an important point. And one of the examples across the state that I found, or multiple examples of this, is where, uh, this, uh, local government was offered the T-bill rate plus a certain percentage. Like T-bill rate plus like 0.5% or something like that. And so that's, that's part of where the originality innovation, um, comes in. And, but you do, you do raise an important point. We have tried to keep it as simple as possible.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? No entertainment motion to authorize this request for RFPs for the banking services? So moved.
Second.
Motion and support. Take roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
All right, moving on. We're getting there. Uh, we have a resolution before approving a policy for disposition of city-owned properties.
So, thank you, Mayor. So this, uh, what's dr, what's driving this is the, uh, the Sunset Motel property and the DJ's property. We have a hearing coming up in early, in early June, and we are, we are looking for a, a good way to transfer the property without the city having a lot of expense, uh, in the process for, um, for demolition. We're trying to avoid having to pay the demolition costs ourselves. We found some samples across the state. Micah and I, uh, worked up a, a, a policy. Todd assisted with, Todd Yule, our Public Works Director, assisted with the review. And, uh, we've got a pretty good, um, uh, policy. Uh, Micah, if you could help me real quick, we, we have some minor clarifications that we would like to be able to make in the, um, in the policy. I don't think we need a continuation.
I would agree with that. I mean, it's a policy, not an ordinance to start with. So, um, if the city council approves the concept and what it says substantively, I think city staff can make some minor tweaks in format and clarification without having to come back. I think the, um, clarification that, uh, was brought to my attention this afternoon is, there's two, which requires a different, a, a certain percentage bid deposit. So that's one scenario. And there's another scenario where someone might apply to buy a city vacant property. And under that scenario, I believe there's a minimum application fee of like $200. And we just need to clarify the forms that would be used to, to, to differentiate when you need a bid deposit and when you just need a flat rate application fee. Like that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, and I, and I think the simplest way is for us to, to just do $100 each to, to, and then, and then a percentage if it's a larger bid, but $100 each, which makes it, uh, clear to those reading it. But anyway, if we could get your approval on the process in general, and, and Micah and I can, we know of that part of it later.
The motion then to authorize Sam and Micah to work through the policy of disposition of city-owned property.
Make that a motion.
Support.
Further discussion?
Question.
Yes.
So this, the agenda says it's a resolution, but you just said it's a policy.
Well, there's a resolution, I believe you're approving.
Okay.
To adopt the policy.
Gotcha, thank you.
I think that's how you had it structured.
But the policy is a resolution, correct?
I would say it's 95-plus percent completed.
Okay, so still in progress. Right. With that, with that clarification.
So, yeah, and your business will show the adoption of the resolution, which approves this policy.
All right. Raise, ready to vote? Roll call.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, moving on. We now move to authorizing commencement of Iowa Code 657A, the process to take title of an abandoned residential property at 1023 Garfield Avenue.
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you may.
I'll keep this brief. This is the, this will be a test case of the previous item that we, uh, just, uh, that you just approved. Uh, 1023 Garfield Avenue is a property that the family of the deceased, um, desires not to open an estate on. The state of Iowa is not interested in opening an estate on it because of its value. We've received complaints from multiple neighbors about the, the property. It's, something needs to be done and, uh, we, we're the, or other than us, there really isn't anybody else to take this on. So I think this is a, hopefully a low-cost, uh, low-risk test case for the policy that we just approved.
Someone want to make that a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussions? Roll call.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right. On to page two. Discuss resolution of setting wages and health insurance contribution percentage for full-time and non-union employees effective July 1 of this year. Sam, you want to bring us up the date on what you're doing here?
I sure can. Uh, this resolution is being introduced per the adopted, uh, budget. For your convenience, the pay matrix in the council packets includes the listing of all of our full-time employees. And however, this resolution covers only the non-union full-time employees. A similar resolution for part-time employees is being drafted and that should be on the, the June 5 agenda. Uh, all, uh, all full-time employees participate financially in their health insurance plans through copays deductibles, and approximately half participate in the cost of the plan itself. So currently, non-union employees participate at a lesser level than union employees. This is something we discussed in the budget process. Seventeen of our 31 employees are non-union and 14 are union. This resolution raises the participation rate by non-union employees in their health insurance to be 5% of the cost of the plan or 5% of the difference between the single and the family contributed, uh, none of the cost of the plan for single and family. Uh, union employees contributed 15. Starting July 1, the contribution, unless it's amended, goes to 20% for union employees. And the council decided during the budget process to freeze the union contribution at 15% to avoid increasing the disparity. And those two amendments will be on the June 5 agenda. We also will have, um, at the June 5 agenda, we will have, uh, renewal information and a presentation from, uh, Tom Foose on the health insurance renewal. We also have a brief presentation on life and disability from, uh, Joel Gasing.
Questions?
I was asking for your approval.
So then we need a motion to approve this resolution.
Make the motion to approve.
Support.
Right. Further discussion? Roll call.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
All right. Last item under new business is a first reading of the ordinance to amend provisions of the section 63.04 pertaining to the speed limits on Park Street, US 18, to the eastern corporate boundary. Heard from the Iowa DOT. And as we'd hoped, they are recommending extending that 45 mile-per-hour zone from the easternmost city boundary, just east of Crossroads Drive, all the way to the west side of Shotco's driveway. Make the motion to... Further comments? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
All right. Sam, anything you'd like to tell us? Tom, anything you'd like to add? Kurt?
Um, just, the guys kind of have a, guys and gals, um, kind of have a thankless job. So if you see any of them, just tell them you appreciate what they do, I guess would be my suggestion. The, uh, the job is becoming increasingly challenging and, and, uh, dangerous. And, uh, so they put their uniforms on each and every shift to protect our community. So grateful for that myself.
On behalf of the community of Lyle, thank you for all you do. And I will try and make a point to pass that along to all of your, the other personnel in your department. All right, council comments? Anything to my left?
Um, I also want to thank the police officers. And then also, I believe next week is EMS week. Um, so we want to thank SCAT and all their volunteers. They also have a tough and thankless job some days. So we want to thank all those volunteers there. So, that's it.
Anybody else this side? I'm good. Tom? Uh, they only up next Tuesday. Poll's open at 7:00 a.m. and, uh, will be open until 8 o'clock that evening, taking place here in the third, uh, third floor of the Community Services Center. If you need to vote, you can vote until 5:00 p.m. on Monday, May 20, if you so desire. So, at the, yes, in, in Primark. So, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
We are adjourned.